Good morning, at 9:30 a.m., Tuesday, June 4th. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's on.
It's on, okay. I'd like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 28th Commissioner meeting.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right, we have public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. They were posted, all right, no comments, we'll move forward. Resolution, Jeremy Sinko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Five resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number one for the Geyer Road Water Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project. The second is authorizing change order number one for the Medina County Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. The third is authorizing the sanitary engineer to request statements of qualifications for professional design services for the Westfield Water Treatment Plant Upgrade Project. The fourth resolution is accepting an awarding bid for Polymeric Emulsion Flocculant for the Medina County Kennethhold Water Reclamation Facility, and the final is amending the septic disposal fees for the Liverpool Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Holly Hearn, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have one new hire at office for older adults, five rate increases, one in sanitary, one in maintenance, one in transit, and two in building, two leave of absence, one at Job and Family Services, and one in transit, and one resignation at Job and Family Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks, Holly. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have six resolutions for you guys today. The first of which is the approval of an early intervention service grant between the Ohio Development Board of Developmental Disabilities and the Family First Council. Our second resolution is a grant agreement for the Ohio from OCJS for, it says fiscal year '23, that is actually correct, but it is for the period of July of 24th through June of '25 with the Drug Task Force in the amount of $122,630.39. Our third resolution is the transfer of inventory between offices from a couple monitors going from probate court over to the highway engineer. Our fourth resolution is declaration of excess property. Most of this is cleaning up some of the excess from the auction that we held not too long ago. Our fifth resolution is expenses of county officials. The sheriff is going to school resource officer training. And our sixth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,504,181.21.
Move to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Brett. Chris Jacob, County Administrator, just some time. Good, very good time, good time. No, no, it was all good.
Proves your experience.
Two resolutions this morning. First is authorizing the advertisement for bids for the Medina County Administration Phase One Parking Lot Repair and Replacement Project. And the second and final resolution this morning authorizes a change order for Medina County Emergency Management, excuse me, Safety Services Facility Project. This is a stormwater improvement-related change order. The amount is $17,352.32, and the general fund obligation is $8,030.96. Excuse me, I ran up steps.
It's okay. Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second, and as you indicated, we'll be paying half, the other half will be coming from the EMA. It's out to cover the other part, correct?
Correct.
Is it 50/50, is that what it is?
There's a slightly greater than 50%.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's about 55%.
Okay, all right.
But we appreciate they contributed what they thought they had available, and I think it's appropriate for us to handle the rest.
And on the other resolution, are we doing the whole other part as an option this year or no?
Yeah, actually, I'm meeting with Dan tomorrow morning to finalize the bid specifications. Hopefully, present those to you later this week. I think we're going to do actually two bid packages with the option to award one, or both, or neither.
So they're going to be like an alternate?
Yeah.
But the plan is that's going to, we're going to bid that after the first of the year, or is the plan to bid at first this year?
We're going to bid it within the next few weeks.
Okay.
So we bid it, see what the prices are, and we may decide to...
We're going to bid, I think we'll be able to award the Phase One bid,
Phase One.
Okay.
Which is the parking lot that exits off of Liberty, and then the other one will get pricing, determine if we have available resources to pay for that. We'll also do an asphalt versus concrete option within that second portion.
At some point, though, there was a discussion that we might get better pricing if we did it after the first of the year?
That was an original comment that was made by the Engineers' Office. I think we're going to proceed, I think, and take a look at the numbers that come in.
But that's where the neither option comes in, if we don't like the numbers.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thanks very much, and we do have an architect coming in this morning at 11 o'clock to discuss a couple improvement projects in this building.
Correct.
So we'll see them there.
Yeah, we'll be likely off camera for that, we'll just be in the conference room.
Wherever you'd like to.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Super great, all right, thanks. Department updates, Denise Testa, Planning Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before I get started, just two resolutions for your consideration, the first being approval of a Fair Housing Service Agreement with the city of Medina, as well as adopting a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan for the county of Medina. So the second resolution is required for our Community Development Block grant application for PY-24, and we utilized their recommended language for that.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So this month, you've received the Planning Commission materials with two subdivisions and our Liverpool CRA appointment, as well for get ready for July. We currently have eight agenda items, six subdivisions, two in Montville, two in Liverpool, one in Granger, one in Hinckley, and two text amendments, one in Homer and one in Lafayette. So no vacations this month. In addition to that, we've also concluded the Lodi Bridge project. We had our dedication last week, so that is pretty much closing out, so we're very happy with that. Moving forward with our Program Year '22 CDBG projects, the Montville Pathway has concluded as well, so it's beautiful, by the way, or at least we think it is, as well as the Brunswick Street and the Lodi Pathway will be constructed this summer, probably in July most likely, with an August 1st deadline. So as you know, we're submitting our PY-24 CDBG application, it is due next Tuesday, and that is on track. For LS, the LeadSafe Ohio and the CHIP applications, so we've currently received 90 CHIP applications and six LSO, keeping in mind that we can use CHIP funds and LSO funds together. So for CHIP home rehabs, we can approve them by using LSO funds. The other good news with LSO is that the state has extended the deadline again to July 31st, so that helps us out quite a bit to get those funds obligated. I have a Fair Housing presentation to Medina Creative Housing this Friday, as well as, and then we're just continuing to work, and we would also like to thank you for your support with the Lodi Bridge. We're really pleased with that, and as I have said a number of times, I've never seen a more beautiful bridge than what that turned out.
Well, especially when you look at the pictures they had and what they had there before, it really shows what those dollars could be used for.
Right, the only downside is that people can't clean their tires off when they drive across the former bridge now. Do you have any questions?
Lots of progress.
You're going to stay for discussion?
I am, yes.
Thanks, Denise.
Thanks. Laura Toth, Office for Older Adults. Do you want us to do the resolution now?
Will you do it at the end?
Do it at the end, we'll do it at the end.
I have all kinds of exciting stuff.
Okay, great, okay.
Short but sweet, it's my first day back after two weeks vacation, so.
Welcome back.
I'm so happy to be here. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, as an agency, last month, we made the decision to lower our activity age to 55-plus for activities. We do have federal grant-based programs that are age 60 and over, obviously, there's no changing that, but in line with Medina Rec Center, Brunswick Rec Center, Suprema Senior Center, we're going to take that age for participating at our senior centers to 55 and over. We've had people call and request, and, you know, we've had a lot of previous, unfortunately, our services for people age 60 and up, but if people want to get involved earlier, that's fine, we still have plenty of activities open to the public, it doesn't matter what age, but for general activities, we are going to 55 and older model, and it's been met with really good reception, so we are excited about that. I have Brian here because he's going to help me facilitate. A few months ago, we had, our foundation made a video, and some of you, I think at least two of you have seen it, because we showed it at our open house, but I wanted a chance to show it to the public, and I haven't had a chance until now. It's about three minutes, it's well worth your time, so we can get that going.
I know, we've got some staff members that can't wait till they're 55 to...
To get going, that's right.
Right, Ron?
Right.
I'd say that was a joke about Brian's 50.
I hit that 55 mark later this year, so.
We need to spread the word and let them know.
Can we hear the sound, or?
I think everyone should know about it, shout it from rooftops. And I try to tell everybody that I know, or get to know, or, you know, about this place, because it's a wonderful place.
I play cards, I play bingo, I have lunch, and by now, that's my life. If I didn't have it, I don't know what I would do.
And most people don't realize how important it is for their lives to come and do things. If they don't do things, you know, they're going to go downhill.
I feel this keeps everybody young at heart of doing things and remembering stuff, you know, keeps you active.
Sometimes I think people think that people that come to the senior center are low income because they take the bus. That is not necessarily, it means because of their age or health, they can't drive anymore.
Tuesdays through Fridays.
I only come on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
It's kind of helping me out, coming here on Wednesday.
Two times a week, Wednesdays and Fridays. We come as much as we can.
I come three days a week.
Wednesday and Friday for bingo.
Oh, I like to go to exercise class on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I also volunteer here two days a week.
Every day except for Tuesday.
I appreciate being with others.
It gives you something to do.
I like to get the exercise, like to socialize with the people.
I mean, I'm not a very good artist, I'm a terrible artist, but I just like to come and have fun, and it's the place that I come to have fun.
Everything here is, it is not top drawer, I don't, there is nothing they don't do that I don't consider not top drawer, and the people are just wonderful, they'll help you with anything.
I really appreciate everything they do.
You know, I don't want to be going to talk to the people who call me on the phone, well, I really don't know who you are, when I can come here.
We're kind of like a second family.
It's good for me and it's good for them.
They always have things that are fun to do and good people to talk to.
If you're not a people person, coming to a place like this is worth your while. There's something here, I believe, for everyone. I'm doing yoga, there's people shooting pool, there's people playing cards.
There is no harm, it's for free.
So get out of the house and come down here, even if it's just for an hour or two in the morning, you'll feel better.
Very nicely done, very nicely.
Yeah, we're really, really happy, and our participants did such a great job of talking about what the center means to them, so I wanted to make sure and share that with all of you and with the public. So a couple more things, seniors farmer's market. Now, this is kind of the tough sell here, at least with staff, and I think it's going to be with seniors. The state of Ohio has decided that this year they are going to take the whole senior farmer market voucher program online, so there are no paper applications, there is no mass dispersment of vouchers, there are no paper vouchers. Everything is done through email and through smartphones. Our concern, we found out about this about three weeks ago, our concerns, many of the counties' concerns with this are, the population that this targets may not have smartphones, may not have emails, there is no getting out of having an email to receive the QR code to present to farmers to claim your vouchers. We continue to have, they put a second training in this week, which my staff will be attending. They, nobody has to come into the agency, you can do everything online and never see anybody at the center, which is fine, there's no particular number of vouchers that Medina County is going to get, which in the past, it's always been somewhere around 200, so this is a massive change for three, a little over three-quarters of the state. The southeast Ohio counties are still able to do the traditional method because of internet access. My argument, if I were to have had one, it is internet access for everybody, but they didn't ask our opinions before they rolled this out. So we're going to do the best we can do, our staff is going through training, people can do it online on their own, they can also come to us, and we will help them put in the online application, and if necessary, help them set up an email. There are public, you know, points, if somebody doesn't have the internet or have a computer, they can go to the library, we also have a public access computer at the center. I think many of us feel that this program may be underutilized in Medina County, in many counties, we'll have to kind of see how it goes, but we are there for people, we want them to get signed up. They do have farmers signed up for the program who will take the voucher QR code, people can utilize that as much as they want, up to their $50 limit.
What, let me ask, once they get the QR code, can't they just print that out and have a paper that can be scanned?
Yes, at that time, or they can have a benefits card, like they have, either one, either the paper code or the...
So even if they just have a flip phone, they're still going to be able to participate in the program?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Correct, you can print out or have the option to have a benefit card.
Got it, all right.
Yes, either one of those, and...
But you have to have an email and be able to get access.
You have to have an email, and you have to apply online, and we will do our best as an agency to help people with that.
So now, your help could be helping them get into their email account to print out, which is still, it would be helpful if you could do that as an agency, or it could come to you in lieu of, but maybe that's an option?
They could, everybody has to have their own email, though, so we can't do it.
Well, we have a dial program, we have it to get everybody educated in terms of being able to set up their own email, so, and we'll continue to have those online as well.
Yes, and we have classes, we have classes all the time, and are helping people to set up emails. This will definitely be a push to get people to do that, and then they'll have to, it takes, so once they submit their application, it takes one to two weeks for the state to approve that application, and then they will get an email saying they're approved with that QR, which is printable, that QR code, so that time lapses. You've got to get people to come back once they come in the first time.
Right.
I assume at some point, we'll get a report of how many vouchers were printed in Medina County or issued in Medina County.
That was asked as well, and that is a state, I'm sure the state will have data on that. It's really, the program was always administered, it's USDA funding, but it was always administered through the AAA, and they still have a hand in it, but really, everything's going through, all the applications are going straight through the state of Ohio.
Okay, I'd be interested in knowing those numbers for our county.
Yeah, absolutely, I would as well, yeah.
Very late for farmer's market season for you guys to get the notice.
Usually, it's in June, and we have our dispersment day about mid-June, but this is more time-consuming, so, yeah. Would have been nice to known in March.
Yes, it would have, it would have, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so the last thing I have for you today is that June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and I believe you have a proclamation, and I would also have my Adult Protective Services staff, if you guys would come up. We have Michelle Herns, who's the supervisor of the division, and then Shelley Nagy and Stacy Webb.
That's right, I won't go through reading at all, but I'll at least say this resolution, 240423, proclaiming June 15th, 2024, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Yep, move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right, okay.
I know, it's purple.
I forgot. She should wear purple.
It's okay.
Did she do that on purpose, Colleen, or was that serendipity?
Of course she did.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your work.
So World Elder Abuse Awareness Day is Saturday, June 15th, as it will be in Medina County, so if you can mark your calendars and remember to wear purple to recognize those who are mistreated by others when they are aging. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Have a wonderful month.
All right. OSU Extension. Good morning, how are you doing?
Good, how are you? Thank you.
Good.
I'm Sierra, I'm the 4-H educator with Medina County Extension, so I'm going to report on all four of our areas that we represent through OSU Extension. So first is community development with Kyle White. So the solar panels are installed and functioning as of late April 2024 and producing more than was predicted. As part of the grant from Ohio State Energy Partners for the Solar Education and Research, which includes the solar panel installation, Kyle taught four separate luncheon learns. There were 33 people registered and most attended those classes. A beginning grant writer class series will be held at our office October 9th and November 6th. With Agriculture and Natural Resources with Ashley Kohanik, the Master Gardener volunteers have installed a demonstration garden at our office. OSU has a series of plant-by-numbers fact sheets to assist the public in adding pollinator gardens easily to their yards, and that was included in your packet. The annual pond school was held on May 21st, there were 34 attendees to learn about pond plants, algae management, and wildlife management around ponds. We wrapped up our farm series, home farm series, on May 1st with a presentation from OSU Ag Law Specialists who helped new farmers with their questions about farm ownership, leases, food law, and liability. We have 18 public presentations so far this year in partnership with other community partners. Family Consumer Science with Erin Ruggero finished off the school year with eighth graders completing the Real Money Rural Program at six of our schools in our county, hosted a hands-on canning class in our office in May, and plans to host more come early fall, created a new partnership with Oasis of Hope teaching Money 101 Series to clients, and has a new program beginning in the summer in partnership with the Medina County Domestic Courts. Erin will be teaching the What About Me Program, a program for youth experiencing family disruption slash divorce. Classes will be offered twice a month at our office. With 4-H Youth Development, our 2024 Fair Enrollment and Pre-Fair Enrollment, the projects judged before fair, and our livestock and horse projects are all up. We have three camps coming on the next three weeks, so our Cloverbud Camp, our Day Camp for juniors, and our Junior Overnight Camp on Kelly's Island. Soon, we will be hiring two new program assistants for the 4-H program, one full-time and one part-time. Our 4-H enrollment is at an all-time high, reaching 1,050 community club members, and a total reach of in-school programming and community club members of 3,000 youth in Medina County, and more come the fall. And then today, we have with us our summer assistants, they are new hires, Lacey Hafner and Emily Coice, and they will be assisting us this summer.
Sierra.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Sierra, great. All right, now open up for public comment. Please limit five minutes, and appreciate if it dealt with county matters, if you wouldn't mind, so do we have any? Before you come forward, put your name for the record, please.
Justin Veroli.
Thank you.
And the issue is a township issue in the sense that it's in regards to the 2020-2021 financial audit in Lafayette Township, but the reason that I'm here today is it actually appears that during that audit process, Ms. Swedick had interjected the county commissioner's office at the aid of one of our trustees, and I was hoping to get an understanding of why.
I guess I don't know what specifically you're talking about.
Do you want to take a look at that?
Sure. This is not true. I did not, I did not contact them for a meeting. Oh, oh, okay, yes, they asked for an introduction. I thought you meant I requested meeting, they asked for an introduction.
Who asked for the introduction?
The township trustees.
Gotcha, okay, well, so, in addition, and I appreciate, here, I've got a copy for you as well, but...
They work in our building, so...
I understand, and that's kind of what I took from this, is exactly that, and that's the reason that I'm here today. What I have, and I have a packet for each of you, during that same audit process, we had a reciprocity agreement with Westfield Township. We had an employee that was responsible for managing that, it was mismanaged, fraudulently reported, led to our taxpayers being defrauded. It was brought up both in public meeting and to the trustees at the time, and it seems to have escaped review during the audit process. So I was here today to ask for your assistance in doing exactly what was done previously, and bringing this to the attention of the people that need to see it, in order to not go after employees, but hold accountable the elected officials that have violated their oaths to uphold the state laws, that have ignored the fraud that's gone on in our township, and simply not been responsible to the taxpayers that elected them. So if you could assist with that, again, like I said, the documents are all there.
Chris, would you mind hooking him up with Lindsay?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I just, just to make it clear, that we as Board of Commissioners, we have statutory functions, and because of our backgrounds or his background, sometimes people approach us, I'm a former legislator, I'll get people to approach me about what's going on at the General Assembly. She was a fiscal officer for a number of years, and I know other elected officials would approach her, in fact, sometimes I would refer people to her, it's like, hey, she's a fiscal officer at Township, she knows how the system works, ask her. And that seems to be some of the issues, and I just want to, that's not really a function of the board, that's a function of just...
And that's exactly why I would have never sought to come here for that until I saw that that had been done previously.
Okay.
Well, I think also, and I think all of our information is public as well, that emails and those kinds of things go a long way for purposes of getting us to respond to these requests, we're always happy to point people in the right direction. I guess the only other thing, you know, this stack of papers just put in front of me, I will look over it, but I don't know that this concludes any fraud or anything else any more than, you know, that I know that there's information about solar panels and the 4-H materials we were handed, so I don't think anybody should read into the fact that we're going to make those connections that we would do for anybody else, as any conclusions on the part of us weighing in on anything that may or may not have happened. So I just think that's important for us to clarify that as well.
And we're always happy to, for any elected official in the county, to make connections and hook them up with the necessary people.
Yeah, and email's always a great way to do that.
Yep, indeed. All right, is there anybody else, public comment? Seeing none, okay, we'll go ahead into discussion session. One of the first items of business is the Montville Township CRA. Bethany, did you want to come forward? I know I've shared a lot of documents with... I know I've shared a lot of documents with my colleagues, and I think with a number of people that are here, so, okay.
So, the Economic Development Corporation received an application from LTC Montville. Actually, we've been discussing it for over a year. So, uh, we're glad to see that, you know, things, things kinda worked themselves out in the, in the construction industry, and you were able to plan to move forward with the project this year. Uh, this is David Mitchell, who we're working with, so he's joined us today. LTC Montville is planning to build a commercial building about 71,000 square feet. It will be a congregate care operation, 99-bed nursing home, if you will, but it will focus on short-term rehab and also have some longer-term beds available. The project involves a total investment, uh, at least in the capital portion of the project, of about $15.8 million, probably closer to 17, when all is said and done. And, uh, they're planning to begin construction as soon as possible. Um, the agreement that, the draft agreement you have in front of you says on or about July 1st. Uh, I live in that area and I've seen the trees coming down, and you're preparing the site for construction activity. Their plan is to create, uh, within a three-year period, 120 new full-time equivalent jobs with payroll of approximately $6 million by the time the building is construction, constructed and the employees are hired. My guess is it's gonna be a little bit higher than that, just given the natural rate of inflation. The project, uh, the plan, according to, we use the Montville Township, uh, proposed guidelines, will, the, the agreement calls for a 15-year total tax exemption in the, in the property tax of 50% for the first five years, 35% for the following five years, and 25% for the final five years. So, as we do with these, um, projects, we have organized a meeting. Uh, we met last week with the company. We brought in, uh, County Commissioner Hambley was there, our township officials were there, the county auditor had a couple of folks there, and Medina City Schools sent some representative. The other agreement that, in addition to the CRA agreement you have in front of you for consideration for proposal, uh, for, uh, resolution next week, the schools, Medina City Schools and the company have also agreed to a 15-year compensation agreement. I would note that, according to current state law, we don't need school board approval for any projects below the 75% level. And this one is obviously below that. Uh, so the company voluntarily is providing a donation of $3,250 a year to the schools for 15 years totaling $48,750. The other stipulation, that's a little bit different than the other CRAs that the county manages. Um, the company did agree to apply for membership in the City of Medina, Montville Township Joint Economic Development District, also known as a JED, so that you know what the initials are. They have applied for JED membership, and the JED board is in the process of reviewing and discussing that application. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, I know, and I, I had the emails and then shared the, the information. I was at the JED meeting last week as well, and I know at that point they decided to table. Uh, I think at that point in time, I was having conversations with the county prosecutor regarding as to the linkage between the JED and the CRA, and whether they can work independently or, uh, or, or if you will, together. The intent all along, from the very beginning, was that they would work together. Uh, I think, uh, when I shared with everybody the cost of services studies that were, were done a couple decades ago, as Montville was looking at its cost of services and balancing its growth, and the, and the revenues coming in from that growth. They don't have an industrial base, so in looking at commercial, they had to make some decisions as to the areas to acquire sufficient revenues for commercial. We know in the cost of services study, not all commercial development, uh, if you will, pays its ways when it comes to cost of services. The big boxes actually take more in services than they do typically in taxes, according to that study. And so the idea was balancing out, that would help stimulate the discussion and ultimately the creation of a JED for certain kind of, uh, projects. And one of them, like SUMA, is in the JED. Uh, they pay an income tax, their, their employees do. Uh, and so, there's that overall, uh, period of time, there was that, if you will, connection. As I understand from the prosecutor, Mike Lyons was supposed to be here. It just worked out this week that he wasn't able to. I did get a, a call from Brian Richter, who had been reviewing this. As far as the prosecutor's, uh, opinion was, there really is no formal linkage between the two. It's still, the CRA is under the authority of the Board of Commissioners to make the decision, and based on that, we can make that decision. Of course, the JED can move independently. If they want to accept that application, they can. And if they wanna obviously give the benefits that are associated with that, they can. But the commissioners, as part of our process, can go ahead and consider the CRA, if you will, independently of, of that JED, as I understand from, uh, from Brian Richter's, uh, phone call. They were gonna further review the JED documents, but after reviewing it, it doesn't look like there is that. I think that it's just been a matter of custom, convention, and just a matter of policy of doing it, as you indicated, the requiring that, uh, application to a JED. Because it, it makes sense from the cost of services study, because therefore, an income tax can be utilized by the township to provide the additional services, uh, needed for whatever facility that may be.
So this CRA is in the Route 3 corridor, and when it was created, 2012, a number of years ago, we also created a, uh, a CRA district in the Route 18 corridor. And at the time, working with Montville Township, it was agreed that the general map of the JED, of the CRA area would kind of overlay the JED district that the city and the township were working on, with the understanding and, and plans that companies that would benefit from a CRA would apply for the JED, so that the township and the city would receive, uh, receive income tax revenue to help pay for, for those services. So I, all the agreements that we've had in Montville Township to date have applied for the JED, and I believe have been accepted into the JED.
So it's been a, that's a, not a legal requirement, it's been a practical requirement.
Correct.
So, in the past, have there been others where we've approved the CRA before the JED was approved or completed?
I didn't, I didn't go back and look at the timing. I know that as part of the process, when we have the, the meeting with the company, I've invited Kimberly Marshall to attend, because she keeps track of the JED activity. So we confirm with Kimberly that the company has indeed applied for the JED before the township, or before the commissioners would, uh, would move forward with legislation.
Right. My only, I guess, I mean, I think, and also is, you know, a resident of Montville, and this, this is almost literally my backyard, that doesn't affect my, my view on it, but, uh, very close to it. Uh, I just wouldn't wanna do anything as a board that limits the incentive for the JED membership, because I, I think that's a, a great benefit to the entire community. So, um, that, that's what I'd wanna be sensitive of, is if, if we move too quickly. I think the CRA, I don't, I don't disagree, I'm sure, uh, the prosecutor's office did the research, and it, it kinda meets with my understanding how the CRA process works, that we could do that. I just would be hesitant to do that if it, if it undermines the process of, of, you know, getting, getting a, a member of the JED.
Well, the funny thing was that the, the JED actually held up making their decision based upon what the CRA decision is. So it's, it's like a chicken and the egg thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I think, uh, we have to be consistent in our policy. And I, I, you, you've talked about the needs, well, obviously with the JED, and that obviously has to do with the cost of services. But I think ultimately, as I've, I've pointed out in our meeting, both the, the JED as well as when we were meeting, uh, as a, a discussion group, I guess, regarding this, is when we look at our senior population, which Laura Touth was here, I can refer to her, but our senior population, we have right now about 20% of our senior, our population are seniors, 65 and older. And when you look at the statistics of, and it's projected to grow up to, up to 20, I said 20%, up to 25% by 2030, and it's gonna continue to grow. Seven out of 10 people that are 65 and older, sometime in their lifespan will require, will need that kind of facility. Seven out of 10. And so there's a public need for this kind of facility in a community, in a, in a, in a region, or area, in our county. And so we have a first-class, uh, operation that's going to be here. Every individual there, as I understand, is gonna have their own room. They're gonna have the support facilities. Every, at every medical facility, I'll, I'll just say, every medical professional will be available to make sure that those people stay as healthy as they can and not utilize, uh, resources outside that facility. That's their job. That's the way, actually, as I understand the business model, when it comes to, uh, places like this, you're, you're rated on, on actually, and your compensation's based on how well you perform that function, and keeping people out of the emergency room, keeping those seniors and those individuals that are medically frail from having to go to the hospital. And they're rewarded for that. So their business model actually is predicated on not utilizing LST, on not being, having to, to have that, that demand. So I think, and, and all in all, we need the demands there, the quality be there, and indeed, their, their business model, their, their compensation is based upon them doing a good job to make sure that they don't have, to be dependent upon other facilities for medical needs. Uh, other than, obviously, your, your typical scheduled trips. Uh, I know there's a lot of investment in technology nowadays in these facilities to, for those kind of telemedicine, that they don't have to go out. And so you've got all these brand-new facilities that are built so that these people don't have to have demand on other medical facilities. So I look at this as, really, it's a, and when you look then at the payroll, and you look at the increase of the tax base, and especially after 15 years, they'll be paying 100% of the, of the taxes. This is actually a great, I think, a great benefit.
Well, that...
It's a good use of that commercial.
That benefit comes from, from participation in the JED. So I guess maybe that's, for me not being part of that meeting, is that, is the JED component a foregone conclusion at the point where...
So, if I, just to address your, your question very quickly, looking at the language in the CRA agreement, it indicates that the developer will apply for membership in the JED, which they have done. So they've met that requirement. The next part says, "Upon acceptance of membership, agrees to comply with JED program requirements." Basically, that means remitting the, the income tax, which is not gonna happen until the jobs are created. So, in terms of the process, they've done what they're obligated to do, which is apply. The rest of it is up to an independent board. This agreement doesn't, doesn't say that we have to wait to approve this until they're accepted into membership. It just says that once they're accepted into membership, they'll agree to follow the JED procedures, which...
And I guess maybe then the question is, there's a scenario where they're not accepted into membership? Is that, is that, that's the variable? The kind of the unstated variable here, or...
Uh, we, with all of the, with all of the CRAs that have involved JED relationships, I don't believe the JED board has ever turned down one. So, history could be, hopefully, a good indication.
The question would come down, why would they turn it down? At this point, you contribute an income tax, and you're basically, you're, you have the ability for some grants, for some improvements, but other than that, uh...
It's, it's new money for both the township and the city.
Yeah, no, it seems like a no-brainer to me. I just, I, my, my only conservative is a practical matter, this, the, the order has been reversed in the past. I, I wanna make sure we're not setting it up for, for the, for there not to be JED participation, but...
Well, the agreement never said, has not said that they applied and, and were accepted, uh, into the JED.
Based on the application.
And just, this is just a matter of timing, from my perspective.
And that's, and that's, I guess, what I need to hear. Cause if it's a matter of timing, that's a question of, of when, not if. That's a different story. If the, if the requirement is application, and they've applied, they've checked that box, and we approve the CRA, I, I would imagine, uh, application could be withdrawn, too, and then they're not part of the JED, and they've got the benefit of the CRA.
If the application is withdrawn, then it seems to me they wouldn't be in compliance with this agreement. So, that would be an issue for...
Did we wanna hear, Mr. Mitchell, did you wanna come forward? You're an attorney that represents the, uh, project owners, correct?
Hi, yeah, my name's Dave Mitchell, nice to meet everybody this morning. Um, you, you hit the nail on the head with the description of the chicken and the egg situation. So, um, we were really approached by, um, the, the county and the JED as, um, uh, an opportunity to, um, participate in, in both the CRA and the JED. And we are more than happy to do that. What we didn't want to happen is that we submit the application to join the JED, and then have the, with the understanding that tax abatement was available and grants were available, and then those programs be denied or turned down, and we're obligated to pay, you know, 1, 1 and 1/4% for our employees. So, um, I can confirm for you that it is our intention to follow through with our application, presuming that, that the CRA, uh, application has been granted. So, we would be joining the JED with, on that basis. So, uh, no, no concerns there. The only caveat to that is there's been some discussion recently relating to the ambulance runs and the current situation that, uh, that, that the township is in of having to reimburse the Cleveland Clinic and Medina Hospital for ambulance runs that aren't paid by the patient. Um, and we are, are, are certainly not comfortable with any concept where we would be singled out as a, uh, particular user of those services to pay something more than our obligation to the JED, like any other, um, taxpayer. So, um, if, if that, if JED participation is gonna be conditioned on some additional obligation to contribute to ambulance runs, that would be the only thing that would, um, make us take a second look at, at, at JED admission and JED membership.
Now, there, there's a JED meeting scheduled, uh, June 20th, in anticipation that we would be taking action, uh, maybe next week, and therefore, they could then consider this matter, um, their portion of it, as I understand. So, to keep with their timeframe of, by July, July 1, in order to proceed.
Yeah. And I mean, I think our, um, our next steps are probably the, have the least moving parts, based on what you just indicated. Uh, well, I haven't been on the board as long as anybody else up here, but we've, I don't think we make a habit of not approving CRAs.
Correct. And if you approve the CRA, and I'll just say, if something goes sideways with the JED application, and, and there's a withdrawal of, of the JED, then the CRA agreement could always be rescinded. I mean, that's, that's certainly something we can take care of in the future, because this tax abatement isn't gonna actually benefit him until a year after the JED is constructed. So, he'll probably have time to kind of...
To make corrections.
...have a correction in the future.
Yeah, cause what I, what I prefer to avoid is, um, you know, using that as a lever on the township to put them in a spot. I, I don't, I don't think anything, what you just said, has any bearing on our decision for the CRA. I see why that's a, why that matters to the township, certainly. But, um, I don't know that it has any bearing on our decision for, for the CRA. And, and so, in that sense, I'd be inclined to move full steam ahead if I didn't feel like it was, I, I just wouldn't want it to be something that's used to apply pressure, to, you know, to put the township in a situation that maybe they're not comfortable with either.
Sure.
And I wouldn't say that for any township, whether I'm a resident or not.
Yeah, and I'll just put on the record, there is no, um, second agenda here or underlying things.
No, yeah, and I don't want to imply that at all.
Understood, understood, but just, uh, we're, we're proceeding, um, completely above board and, and by both the JED and the, and the, and the county's requirements. So, um, if, uh, if you want us in the JED, we're happy to join, with the understanding that there, uh, that the CRA benefits would be available. If you don't, we won't, and, and that's fine.
Well, and I, and I definitely think any organization that's in that area needs to be part of the JED, because that's where the benefits do flow back to both the city and the township, well, the, the JED itself, I should say. And, um, I, I just, I think that is, the, the community benefits extend from there. And, and, um, nobody wants to, you know, I'm certainly not gonna be up here saying no to the, to the type of investment that you're looking to make there, both in terms of employees and facility, so...
So is there any reason somebody would not be accepted into the JED? Are there specific qualifications that would not meet here? Like, you've never had anybody rejected?
To Bethany's point, we, the JED boards never reject a JED application. When I started with the city, which was back in 2011, the JED board...
Did you wanna come to the, sorry.
Oh.
Kimberly Marshall's, who's with the city Medina. Thank you. And then we'll, uh, Township, I'm sorry, we'll just go ahead and complete the conversation here.
This used to be in the little round room.
I know, but no.
Now we're on camera, look at us.
See, COVID changed a lot of things.
So, when I started with the city in 2011, the JED district had already been formed as of 2010. And it's all voluntary. We don't force anybody to join. So at that time, there were no incentives. So what's the point in joining the JED and paying income tax if there's no incentive to join? So that's when we started working with Bethany on the idea of forming a CRA district over the JED district in that Route 3 corridor, as well as the Route 18 corridor. So, very early on, SUMA, the two schools in Montville Tire, were the first joiners, so they probably did not benefit from the CRA, because that, this, the CRA overlay had not been implemented yet. That CRA didn't really take effect until probably late 2012 or 2013. The new projects since then have gotten the CRA. And at the, um, I think Drug Mart, it might've been the only one that got a straight 50% across the board. But since then, the township applied, um, implemented a policy of that 50%, 35, 25, 5, 5, and 5, which this developer is in agreement with. So, there have not been... So there have not been any JED applications that have been rejected. So in addition to that, the other incentive that the JED Board decided to create was a financial assistance, which is like a grant to help set offset the cost of different types of infrastructure that might be needed for the project. And so they they've worked out sort of a formula based on payroll, based on how much they're investing in the project. This one that they have applied for that financial assistance, but the JED Board has not ruled on that one yet either. So those are the two pending items that will be addressed at the June 20 meeting. So while this is all voluntary, it was the intent that in order to get the CRA, that you would join the JED. That was always the intent. That was the discussion. In fact, I pulled up the minutes from the October 2012 meeting, and I mean, it's back then, we typed them up verbatim, and so it's it's all part of that discussion, so.
And I also, and I appreciate that background, because it's helped.
Yeah, yeah.
I I'm not so much worried about this particular situation as ones in the future, too. It's it's a lot easier for us to rest on the fact that, well, we've always kind of waited on that, if if we have, and I don't it sounds like we don't know if we have or not, yeah, until that until the JED box is checked.
But we had no other we had no other intervening issues that dealt with it like this.
There's one by me that they had applied.
It's full steam ahead. And then with timing and everything else, I mean, yeah, I think I think that makes a lot of sense, so.
And for this amount of payroll, I mean, obviously, this this project's extremely important to the city. We'd like to see it move forward and have this developer be part of the JED district. I think this project, of all the JED projects, has the highest amount of payroll of any other project that has come in. And in comparison, some of our industrial projects have this kind of payroll. So it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, someone from the township, Mary, you want to come forward?
We're still on the five-minute limit then, or?
No. You can be here to the next family dinner, I'm sure.
Come on, guys.
Just want the record to reflect that the people from Montville laugh the hardest at that.
They know me well. I am Mary Pulaski, and I am fiscal officer of Montville Township, as well as the treasurer for the JED Board, and I have been at the beginning of this, I don't know how many you need, so I'll give you a few, but I'm handing out to the commissioners, is documentation that our attorney and I went through and found, in hopes to help clarify some of this. And just to make it clear, I totally agree, all of us agree with Mr. Hamley's, Commissioner Hamley's discussion on the need for this, as we are nearing it closer, some of us are closer than others. But nobody is opposed to them coming into our township. The problem is, I all of us feel in the township, the cart has become before the horse. If you look at the firsthand I gave you, which is the Second Amendment to the joint contract, that no tax abatement, tax exemption, tax incentives, or TIFs shall be granted on property within the JED district without the consent of contracting parties. We have always done that first. For some reason, they have not come before our trustees or city council.
This is okay, this is that this amendment, I read through this, thankfully, it was online, who are the contracting parties?
Is the City of Medina and Montville Township.
Right, right.
So it would have to be those two agree.
Sure, that's right.
And I have a sample of what we just did with South Town Center, that that happened first, then it goes, from there it goes to the you guys are the last, okay? Because then it goes to the JED Board for approval, but only after the two parties agree to enter into the JED, and they work out any details. Now, our zoning commission has already approved the project. It's a beautiful project, if you haven't seen it. It really is lovely. And they are coming back before the Board again, where they've made some changes, Paul? June?
The June, the second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June. They're coming back before the the zoning board, because they're making some changes. And I'm sure they're probably minor. I I'm not overly concerned about it. But they did have final approval a year ago. They've had they've had two extensions. They probably will need another one if they don't put the shovel on the ground by June 30th, is it? Paul?
Yeah, if that approval goes through at the end of June, they'll be able to.
Okay. So there are some hoops that we're still jumping through. But the point is, for this, our issue is neither the trustees nor the city have agreed with this. And if you.
Agreed with.
Agreed with them entering into the JED.
Oh, right, sure.
So that's usually the first step.
Sure.
And if there's any issues, they work it out there before it moves further to the JED Board. As you can see, I did provide you a log of the JED Board, and when the trustees did approve, the township resolution is under each one of them, and you can see each one of them have come in. Montville Tire, like Kim said, was before we had the CRA, but all the other ones have joined. But it's always been within the way we've handled it. They approve it first at the trustee and at the city. The next one is showing that this is from Bethany explaining in an email on May 13 that the draft of the agreement includes a commitment of the property owner to join the JED. I think we're all there. That's not going to be an issue. If you look at the February 26 of 13, the trustees would like to have, and it's all highlighted, would like to have the requirement that tax abatement agreement should include a commitment from the property owner to join the JED. That's been established, but they haven't been approved by the trustees. If you go back to the last page where it was provided by Mrs. Marshall, in page 5 and 6 I provided you, I do have the entire minutes, if you'd like a copy of it, showing that they should be joining, let me see, it was page 5 and 6.
Yes, right.
Where she believed that they have to join the JED to get CRA. If you approve it prior to the township approving, what if they don't approve because we have issues or zoning or anything else? Normally, the township is the first person that authorize them joining, since it is in the township.
So are you worried, is there a scenario where the township doesn't consent to them being part of the JED? I think that's I mean, that's ultimately my question, I guess.
It's not much as worrying about it, it's just the proper procedure that we have followed since day one with the CRA. And rescinding something, why would we go through those extra hoops? Why aren't we just following the procedure we have followed, based on this log that provided you for South Town Center, which we just did in '23, for Montville Investors and the Holiday Inn, as well as Discount Drug Mart? The procedure has been set. I guess I'm questioning, why are we going out of the normal realm?
Well, I and I would, all due respect, I you characterize it as the proper procedure. That's has been the custom.
The custom.
No doubt.
A choice of words.
And there's a reason, just and the JED Board had the opportunity to approve that application last week and did not. And but that doesn't that doesn't mean that they have complied with our policy, they've complied with the legal requirements, they've complied with the legal requirements of the CRA. And it is this chicken and egg, it's like, I'm not sure I understand what the argument is, if we and right now, this is discussion. We have a meeting next week where it's proposed that we would approve that. And as Bethan Detler has indicated, it is one that can be rescinded if they basically do not, if they withdraw their their JED agreement. If they are denied, then in which case, we would have to make the decision what to do. But it's it's one that can be corrected, because it's, if you will, out of order of what you normally do. The JED had the opportunity to take action, decided to table it until we took action, which was actually your decision as a JED Board member, not ours.
And we tabled it more than just commissioners approving it, because it should have never gone to the commissioner based on history and the way we've already done it. It's why is it that in this Second Amendment, both contracting parties should agree? And we have a resolution that is normally provided to the trustees as well as the city before it even gets to here, much less the JED Board?
Like, but we're arguing the same or?
We're saying this, yeah.
We're taking the same, the facts are clear. In the past, you normally have conducted business and got those approvals and did that before it got to us. Because this project has to move forward, it is this is the timeframe we need to take this action for the CRA. If you've got issues for the JED, you need to resolve those in order to comply with the agreement with the commissioners.
Or not, right?
Or not.
I mean, they're not under we're not directing them to resolve those issues. I mean, and I'm not, I'm this is semantics, but I mean, they the JED Board could freely decide not to resolve those issues. But the question is, what impact does that have on our decision-making? And I guess and that gives leads me to another question I have that's maybe more township-specific. Is the township subsequent zoning steps? None of that's conditioned on anything that happens at the JED Board, right? I mean, you've got the meeting, if they check the boxes, they're going to get their approval, and they're moving forward. So that's I guess that's how I look at this, too, from our role in it, is while I would, you know, I think the the custom is there for probably for a reason, I also think, you know, if we're getting into time constraints, we need to give an indication that we really want this investment to be made in the community. It's it's hard for us, if if we don't do that, you know, that could that could slow things down in a way that maybe is.
If I may, regarding the time constraints, yes, construction season is well upon us.
Yeah.
But Ohio revised code also prohibits the project from beginning construction on the building until the CRA.
So that has to be the first step. The JED can come later.
If the commissioners wait until, because I don't know what's going to happen at the JED Board in late June, if they push it into another meeting, you know, now we're that could go on for months.
Well, and I and I started with my concern about this being a lever, and from this discussion, it doesn't seem like this is a lever that forces the JED to do anything.
But it feels that way.
Well, I and I could see.
It does feel that way, because the cart is before the horse. And why is there time constraints? They were approved by zoning commission months ago, months ago.
But they but they've got to wait for the CRA to move.
But they didn't apply for it. It never came before. We had all winter to do this. So their their all-of-a-sudden emergency is because they didn't work proactive in the winter in order to get this process moving, because this all could have been handled with snow was on the ground. So I guess I'm looking at, it feels like, yeah, there is pressure coming from the commissioners for the JED Board, as well as the trustees. The safety services, yes, we've brought it up at every meeting. You've been at a commissioner. It hasn't been addressed by the township, and nobody's singling them out on it. It's just we're concerned with the average, and we have every right. It's 100-plus thousand to our residents that we have to go back and ask for a larger levy. We do have a reason, the trustees should have had the opportunity to discuss it before any of this came down, which is where the township's coming from. Why it's out of sync? Why is the cart before the horse? Wasn't caused by any of us.
When were they approved in terms of zoning?
Original approval?
Yeah.
Back in 2020.
Back in 2020. So actually, the township had the ability, now I understand from the zoning code, originally when the CRA was created, the document shows that it was conditional use. Congregate housing, like you're talking about, within that commercial area, was conditional. In 2012, I believe, you switched over to permissive, which no conditions. So this project went through, because it is permissible, no conditions attached, and then you you've gone through this process. When was it, and you as you've indicated, you actually raised during that zoning process about the LST?
Even at the preliminary discussions with them, so they've been well aware of it, and we had like two preliminary thing with them back three years ago.
I mean, I just consider it actually, you're the ones trying to use this as a leverage, not, I mean, they need to move forward the project, because this is building season. And you're trying to take something, the CRA was never intended to be utilized for that purpose, to deal with a a cost of service for, and I I understand, LST, there's some additional costs.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and it's based on the type of facility, but your zoning allows that type of facility. If that was a senior housing, and I know you provided data, which I wasn't able to show to my colleagues, because I wrote all over it, but but and we've had, you were looking at Medina, and like the second-largest users are end of senior apartments, and not not a nursing facility. Yes, you have one nursing facility over or care facility that's affecting Medina Township unbelievably, but they pay no taxes, because they're they're exempt. They're not paying any property tax, and that's hurting Medina Township, and I understand that fear. It's like we have a facility, but and I think, well, with Mr. Mitchell's point is, they don't want to be singled out, and I agree. One facility shouldn't be singled out, because they happen to have residents that are going to use it with some regularity. I just, at this point, because we're going to have, you're going to, you'd have senior apartments, you'd have the same issue, but no way to.
But to clarify, the cost of safety services is not part of the zoning commission's duties. It is the trustees. They've never come before the trustees, and if they'd asked a year ago, six months ago, they would have come before the trustees, and this could have been ironed out before we got to this point. But now we're rushing to get this done, because it's time to put the shovel on the ground.
What would be the legal authority of the trustees with the facilities, meeting the zoning code, meeting all other legal obligations as a property owner and a developer? What would be your?
The additional cost to the township. Now, now, it was which way the trustees would go? I would, I have no idea. I mean, that's not for me to say, I'm not a trustee. That's for the Board. But it's comes before the Board to discuss it with the developer, and we have brought it up with the developer since day one. So they're aware of the situation, very well aware of it. But in what the other townships are doing in the city, I mean, I hate to say it, but this is our first one in Montville, and we're trying to set the future, and we're trying to fix it for all of these, the situation for all three entities. I'm hoping Brian from your office is going to help us with Cleveland Clinic. Bethany, I'm sorry, but Brian from the office, your your off Brandon, thank you very much, would be, he has offered to kind of intervene and help and whatever, he's going to try and work with Cleveland Clinic.
With the billing issue with the Cleveland Clinic.
Right. So we're trying to fix it. It's not like we haven't, but we've been trying to fix this for over a year.
Sure. The question, I guess, the the ultimate question is whether, because nobody up here, I don't think, in spite of the position, is is not sensitive to the concerns of the township on that issue. It's the question is whether this is the appropriate form as it relates to the CRA approval and the, you know, and even I would extend that to the JED membership to raise that issue. I think your point is, we didn't have an opportunity to do it at zoning. We didn't have an opportunity to do it, you know, and the other steps that have gone through the process. This feels like the last best chance to raise the issue. The the question, I guess, that that raises for me is whether that makes it the right time still, you know, and and there are probably other mechanisms, policy-wise and otherwise, going forward to address it. But, you know, from from our perspective of of getting getting things moving to the role the county has to play in it, it it does feel like that's beyond the scope of what we really have a position to weigh in on, so.
But I guess I'm asking you to respect the process and have them go back to the trustees. Trustees have a meeting next Tuesday, and we can do it in a special meeting, we have plenty of time to advertise, and let them have the opportunity to discuss it and see if they can accept it. This resolution that is normally provided to the township has not been provided yet. We were just totally bypassed. And we went right to the JED Board and invited the commissioners and landing us here. So why, all of a sudden, because shovel on the ground? Every project's had to put the shovel on the ground. The rules haven't changed. So why can't we go back to where it should be and start the process the way it should be? Meetings are being held, you have another meeting, we have meetings, we could do a special. Why is this being fast-tracked because of a shovel, which should have been done, it's been approved over a year ago?
Yeah, Brandon, did you want to?
I just have a question. We've sat in three and a half hours of three meetings, two have been public, one has been not public. And I understand the township's desires. I've told Mary personally, I think she's one of the best in the county at what she does, and that's her role, she should protect the taxpayers, right? But we've sat here now for three and a half hours in meetings, and we've yet to hear one request from the township. So if it's just to go back to a meeting, what's the meaning for? What is the request from the township? If it's to pay $108,000 a year for ambulances, that's more than the incentive they're being offered to build the facility.
And may I respond to that?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Go ahead, it's discussion, yeah.
That is not the total reason. The reason is, they should be obedient and approved like South Town Center did, and I can give you these, this is the one we just did for South Town, and both parts.
And both parties had approved. All of a sudden, we're out of sync, and you're gonna give them CRA, oh yeah, they're gonna join the JED. What if they decide not to join the JED? Okay, you can rescind it.
That was my question, right, we can, yeah.
Isn't it, if they don't join, if they withdraw their application, then they would not be in compliance with their agreement, which requires them to apply for membership in the JED. So if they withdraw the membership in the JED, then.
They no longer comply with our resolution. But, but see, I know you, it.
How can they put the, the shovel in the ground if they don't have all these proper approvals that are normal?
They do have all the proper approvals.
I would just like to, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanna clarify.
Yeah.
The process that we've been following.
Yeah.
When the, when a new company is coming in, they fill out the petition. The petition is to join the JED. I've always taken that to the JED Board first, because if the JED Board doesn't agree to allow them in, there's no reason to go to the city and the township to do. Because then we have to amend our contract, because we're bringing a new property in to the, into the joint economic development district. That's how we did that with South Town. South Town was a little more complicated, because there was some conjecture as to whether that parcel, it had a residential component a long time ago. So we went through a public hearing and some extra stuff.
And isn't it fair to say?
But it went to the JED Board first, they approved it, then it went to the city and the township, who simultaneously had their meetings and brought that in.
Because the existence of the JED Board kind of makes that be the order of operations.
Well, then why is there no fun in having the JED Board?
But the question though is, whether the CRA has to tie in and respect those timelines, and I just, I haven't seen anything.
And the prosecutor ruled in they're independent. We've only by convention, yeah, right.
Then, then all that research about the payment and who's paying and what's paying, and if the billing is right, that should have been done already, right?
But, but because of, if, if, just in, in the scenario where we approve, where we meet and approve the CRA next week. And then something blows up in the JED discussion, and the application gets removed or withdrawn or, or whatever else, that, that CRA isn't automatic.
It's not an abatement.
But in the scenario where we approve it and it goes forward, we have really, until there are employees in that facility. Or residents in that facility to solve some of these issues that are the hang up for the JED approval. And so the CRA does, that, my answer, I guess, would be the JED approval doesn't, doesn't have to happen as, before the next step. The CRA approval does, which does create a, a timing urgency that doesn't exist for the JED discussion. I, I would prefer, in these situations, that that had already been resolved. It, it seems like we're not gonna get there based on the way the discussion.
It's the first time that we've, we've had this kind of situation. Because in the past, what we would do is, I would, when we receive an application, I verify that they've actually applied for the JED. If they've applied for the JED, then the commissioners have always felt free to move forward with their CRA process. This is kind of an unusual situation. I would also add that the CRA is designed to be an incentive. And in fact, the state requires that it be approved before he break ground, before he.
Before he puts his footers in.
Exactly, it's an incentive. So the, the details of him complying with the incentive, of, of actually getting a benefit from the incentive. We just have to make sure that all those boxes are checked before he actually gets the tax abatement. And the township is part of, township has the, the Montville Township's CRA Housing Council, which meets every year to make sure they're in compliance. And if they have not joined the JED, then they're out of compliance, and they would not be approved for the abatement. So there's a remedy for it, but in the meantime, it doesn't make sense to hold up his construction timeframe. While we work through what could be months worth of conversation.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
A poll for you, yep, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a question, because as I've been promoting JED and CRA to customers coming through our township for years, you know, ten, fifteen years here. I was always under the understanding that both agreements had to be signed before shovels on the ground. That they both had to be committed to before they could put a shovel on the ground, is what I was always told by both JED members and by.
I, I don't think that's the case for JEDs.
I, I don't know.
That's, I don't think that's required for. For the CRA, yes, but not JEDs. It was just convention, it was just to hopefully get everything, before the footers are poured and everything done, or the shovel, that you've got everything tidied up. But apparently, there are these longstanding issues, even the cost of services study refers to issues of providing services and development. That's why the, that, that was done. So LST, I, and I think John Coyne said it best, at the, if I recall correctly, at the JED meeting. It, it seems to be a large part of billing issue. Is because right now, they are, every individual that's using it is being billed, and whether they're being adequately compensated, and what's going on. And I think that's one area that, obviously, I think that's where Brandon has offered, is he, is there another way to help resolve some portion of that to offset the cost to the township? And, and that's one of those areas that obviously everybody wants to work on. But the question is whether the, for at least our board, is whether the CRA ought to be used. And I, it's not gonna resolve your billing issue.
Oh, I agree, but the meeting with the trustees would have, and we could have, and they should have.
You can still do that for the, you can still do that for the JED. I know you're, you're, you're fixed, fixed on the way customarily how the processes work, then at the same time. But legally, they are independent of one another. We, and I think for the benefit of the community and the county, utilize them both at the same time, and have tried to, to do it. Now we've got a circumstance where I truly believe, well, we need to get the CRA done and accomplished, and these other issues can be resolved. I truly believe the, the onus is on the, the JED. I, it's hard to believe why the JED would turn down the opportunity to collect an income tax from that facility. And the township gets, what, thirty grand a year at least from that, at least projected from the payroll?
Well, and I don't know that it's our place to, to, if the trustees say, we're not gonna approve this JED application, that, that creates a different issue. But that hasn't, that hasn't even happened yet, you know? And so that's, that's really where we can, we're trying to judge the unknowns of what could happen from this point forward. The one thing we know is, construction doesn't start until the CRA application gets approved. That's, that's the finite one that I keep going back to.
That does include the trustees, right?
What?
The CRA application, or is that just here?
The approval is.
Okay, so.
The commissioners, they're, they're.
And then, okay, then you can rescind it if things don't fall in place?
Yeah. Oh yeah, yeah, if it's built in, they're noncompliance, that will be removed, they won't have the benefit, as Bethany very clearly said. They're actually, their, their tax liability doesn't occur till actually they've been built.
Right.
And they go through, so.
The other thing that does, even though, like I say, I would prefer to have the JED approval completed before we do the CRA. But the other thing our approving the CRA does, is it gives everybody time to get on the same page in terms of what we wanna see for the JED approval. You know, the township can draw a hard line at that point and not be holding up the construction. And, and I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, I'm just saying you, you could.
There, there has been a sense of partnership between the county and all our townships that have CRAs. And we work with the townships in, in that process, with the meetings and so forth. If we look at the legislation the commissioners passed when the CRA was created, the incentive was fifteen years at fifty percent. Since then, the township has said, no, we want a staggered, the commissioners never modified that. We have, we have gone along in a sense of partnership, said, yes, the township, we're going to comply with that. And indeed, you've got this developer or the, the project, they are complying with that reduced. Even though technically, they'd be, if the commissioners wanted to, could give them fifty percent for, for fifteen years. But since we do work with the township, that is our policy, that's how we proceed. Yes, we're, we're in agreement with a staggered reduction of that abatement. So I think we're gonna continue to work together. And I know traditionally, it has been, the township went ahead and made all these agreements and so forth, and we did the final. At this point, there's reason to believe there's a benefit to the project and the county and even the township with moving forward with the CRA in it. And then, these, these other issues are, are resolved, as a matter of course.
Well, I'm way beyond my five minutes, so.
No, 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 no.
In discussion, there's no five minutes.
We gave you a lot more, just remember that, it was us, not him.
So if we could, if we could.
And it could still make reference to the JED, correct?
In simplest terms for the folks, folks out there watching, correct me if I'm wrong. If the CRA gets approved, it's not really approved until the JED's approved, correct? Because it can be rescinded.
Can be rescinded if, if membership application is withdrawn, yes, or not accepted.
Okay.
Well, I guess we'll have to wait until the attorneys decide if it's not accepted, because the language says that they apply. So if they're rejected, that would be the purview of the attorneys that go, or prosecutor, whether that means anything.
But again, that, I, I think that alleviates, I think some of the, the, the problem here is created by a perceived deadline. And if that alleviates the, sometimes deadlines can help get things resolved, and sometimes they cause more problems. So that alleviates some of that stress, and everybody has time to come up with a better conclusion.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, David, go ahead.
One more comment.
Yeah.
In addition to just wanting to start construction, we have another deadline that's outside all of the bodies involved in this discussion. And that's the Ohio Department of Health and our certificate of need. So our certificate of need to move sixty beds to this location was originally granted in 2020. That approval has a two-year lifespan on it originally. So you had to start your project within two years of the date of approval of the CON. We, by legislative action at the Ohio Legislature, because of COVID. Got them to change the law on CONs, to extend out the obligation date by an additional two years. Because, and we had a project, another project going on at the time, we couldn't get building materials. We couldn't get plumbing materials, we couldn't get generators to open a new building in time to meet that two-year deadline. So the Ohio Legislature across the board, if you received a CON between, I forget the exact date, somewhere in 2019 and somewhere in 2020. Had a CON granted, your obligation date was extended by two years. Our obligation date for this project expires in October of this year. If we do not have a footer in the ground by October of this year, those beds are lost. And we have at the cost of roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. And we have no ability to proceed with this project. So that's the ultimate outside deadline that we have to meet. As far as the process goes for all this, we have never, on any project we've ever done, obtained any tax incentives or other grants or any benefits before. We are not familiar with this project whatsoever. The, the county and the JED came to us. And Ms. Palowski's actually right, and we talked about this multiple times, and she told us about the existing ambulance run problems. That's a problem you have today, whether we're here or not. No suggestion has ever been made, hey, why don't you contribute X, Y, or Z? No program or proposal was ever submitted to us. And today is the first time I'm ever hearing the procedural issue of the county or the township trustees not having been consulted with this. We've met three times in the last week in meetings, and this is the first time we've heard about this. So, you know, if this becomes overly difficult, or you don't want us in the JED, just tell us, and we'll, we'll abandon this whole process today and save everybody a bunch of time. We're, we're trying to be good stewards here and, and be good citizens. And there seems to be lots of hurdles cropping up in the way. So if it becomes too difficult, we won't do it, that's fine. But a lot of people, Bethany and Kimberly in particular, and Ms. Palowski's spent a lot of time on this. We'd like to see it come to fruition, but, you know, we, we can't, we're not twisting anybody's arm here, so.
Thank you. So, we're interested, Brandon is to confirm that we'll be working on a resolution for us to consider for next week. Certainly, the township, the trustees, if you have any meetings or so forth, and just inform of us of any, any issues. And at this point, as I understand the process, that JED will be reconvening to hopefully consider that petition. And obviously, I, I thank you, because I think you're, you're subjecting yourself to not only the, the employees paying an income tax. But since you are a for-profit entity, your net profit as well. So you will actually be contributing to the tax base of the township. And if you're not a member of the JED, then you're not. So, but I, our agreement very, very clear, they are linked. And hopefully, the JED will in, in due course approve that, that application. So, all right. Anything else on that one? All right. All right. Move on? I know we're gonna do, meet with the architect, did you?
I, we only have five minutes, did you wanna postpone this till next week?
Yeah.
That'd be great, okay.
Okay.
All right, I wanna, I just don't wanna rush that.
I would agree.
All right. Anything else that you wanna add, discussion?
NOAAAC board meeting this week, I don't wanna not mention that with our illustrious president in the room. Friday, I don't, I don't know that there's any terribly relevant Medina County items on the agenda. I've got to quit, a little bit closer look on it. The traffic study, I don't think is going to be on this, this month's agenda, so I think that's gonna happen in September. That's the traffic study for the Boston Road project.
Right.
And if it does come up at the meeting, I think I've mentioned this before, but perhaps not in this room. That if there is some discussion about the traffic study related to, to the Boston Road interchange, or some other interchange that would help the Strongsville traffic situation. My preference would be that, you know, that happened in connection with Strongsville lending its support for the repeal of the interchange bill that was passed in 2023. And so far, that hasn't happened, so I'm hopeful that actually, but if we wait till September to get that approved, then Strongsville will have had an opportunity to kind of lend its support to that process as well. But I think NOAAAC's approval of that study will happen without a whole lot of incident too, so that's my expectation. Other than that, no other updates?
Okay. Colleen?
No.
Okay, all right.
Denise had stuck around.
Denise, thank you for speaking. Sorry, sorry, you got to hear all about zoning and all that other kind of stuff, it's all related, so. And just, we, National Resources Assistant Council on Friday, our district will be going through the methodology. I think we have at least 1.6 million to distribute, maybe more on that, I know. Montville in the past has applied for, for money, so I don't know if you guys are gonna come to the table again, but we'll be, okay. We'll be going out this summer for another round of awards for projects for open space. So with that, I will go ahead and recess, that's it for the live. We're gonna be meeting with the architect, and then we'll be adjourning at the end of, of that section. So thanks, everybody, for coming.